Township of Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, May 12th, 2015. Meeting called to order by myself at 7:30 PM. Please rise for flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Carrifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Others present: Mayor James R. Barberio, Ellen M. Sandman, Business Administrator, John Iglesino, Esquire, Township Attorney, Nancy Roserma, Township Clerk, and Ann M. Cucci, CFO. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council Meeting of May 19th, 2015. Informal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance: Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on January 8, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared on both the Daily Record on January 12, 2015, and the Star Ledger on January 14, 2015, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on January 8, 2015. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11 o'clock AM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipony.net.
Okay, just for the public's knowledge, we're going to be moving the Township Auditor will be after the Mayor's presentation. Okay, Mayor?
Bring the whole crew with you. Before I read this proclamation from the Township of Precipity Troy Hills with regard to Relay for Life, let me give a little history how I got involved in Relay for Life. It's important. Back in 2010, when I became the Mayor, I had a visitor, Laura Donnelly at the time, who asked me if I would get involved with Relay for Life and has to do with individuals with cancer, and I didn't really want to be involved in it, you know, and she kept coming back and coming back and coming back until finally she convinced me because in my family, we lost my brother to a brain tumor, and she got me involved, and ever since that time on, I've been involved with you guys, and they do wonderful, wonderful things. You guys are fantastic. And Zach, boy, you grew up a lot. From the first time I saw you, you were about that big, but dedicated, and I'll tell you, they put a lot of time into what's important to people's lives, and that is their families and their friends, so I want to thank you for that. So...
I gotta read it.
Township of Precipity Troy Hills proclamation: Whereas an estimated 51,410 residents in New Jersey will be diagnosed with cancer this year, and 16,250 will not survive; and whereas no single non-governmental, not-for-profit organization in the U.S. has invested more to find the causes and cures of cancer than the American Cancer Society. In fact, the American Cancer Society has helped make possible almost every major cancer research breakthrough since 1946. In 2013, having funded more than $150 million in cancer research through money raised in communities across the United States, whereas Relay for Life is the signature activity of the American Cancer Society and celebrates cancer survivors and caregivers, remembers loved ones lost to this disease, and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer. And whereas more than 3 million people, about 1 in 99 Americans, will take part in Relay for Life this year, of which a half a million of the participants are cancer survivors. And whereas the money raised for Relay for Life saves lives and creates a world with less cancer and more birthdays through funding, fighting, cutting-edge cancer research, early detection and prevention education, advocacy efforts, and life-affirming patient services. Thus, people staying well, helping people to get well, and finding cures for cancers by fighting back. And whereas in 2014, within the Relay for Life events held in northwest New Jersey, 1.2 million was raised, there were over 1,100 teams, 10,000 participants, over 780 survivors, and over 1,400 caregivers who were impacted. And whereas Precipity, one of seven united communities included within the Relay for Life of Central Morris County, is joining over 5,200 other communities worldwide to host the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life, an event to celebrate cancer survivors and remember those who are no longer with us. And whereas Paint the Town Purple is a celebratory activity of the American Cancer Society, a community-wide campaign that promotes cancer awareness, gives individuals and communities an opportunity to show their support and fight back against all forms of cancer. And whereas Precipity will be part of the Paint the Town Purple Initiative within the month of May, and schools, businesses, residents are invited to help spread the message of hope by tying a purple ribbon around a tree or light post and posting signs on support as well as about the event. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, the Mayor of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 to be Paint the Town Purple within Precipity, and further proclaim June 6th to June 7th to be the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life of Central Morris County. In doing so, I urge citizens to celebrate cancer survivorship, remember loved ones lost to the disease, honor caregivers, and join Precipity's communities' fight against cancer, encourage citizens to help finish the fight against cancer by participating in these activities. Only together will we find a cure.
Okay, he's got your camera. He got another camera?
So if you've, I don't need that. If you guys have been around town, you probably have seen track signs at this point, posters, pamphlets, we're out there. I want to start and end with the same, Precipity. I'm not going to fall over people's feet, so, Precipity. You are...
Take the microphone. It gets recorded.
Ah, so don't say anything bad, right? All right. Okay. Precipity, you are one of seven united communities. Again, I repeat, Precipity, you are one of seven united communities when it comes to Relay for Life of Central Morris County. For those of you who are not aware of what Relay for Life is, we are not competition, we are not a run, we are not a race, or anything like that. Relay is the word for the journey, someone who has cancer travels from the point of they hear the three dreaded words, "You have cancer," through hopefully the time that they hear "You are in remission." And all you all know, you all have some degree that you've been affected, whether you are a survivor yourself, whether you are a caregiver, whether you're a friend, a fellow employee, you have been impacted, I'm sure. So what do we do? We do three things at a relay. We celebrate, we remember, and we fight back. We celebrate, we celebrate our survivors, anyone who's ever heard the word "You have cancer." We celebrate our caregivers. Cancer is a survivor's illness. Cancer is a family's journey. We also celebrate the fact that while we can't cure all cancers, we are getting to the point that some are curable, okay? Later on in the evening, we remember through our luminaria ceremony, where each white bag bears a name of somebody either in honor of or in memory of. All the lights on the field are dimmed, and all you see is the glow of the white bags as we walk a lap in silence. And we fight back. We fight back and say, "No more. What are we going to do about this?" So, again, we celebrate, remember, and fight back. Survivors get treated to a dinner reception as well as something new, Survivor Circle with all sorts of fun and activities, and caregivers get treated to gifts too, and there's a DJ and activities. I'm going to end again with Precipity. You are one of seven united communities. Mayor Barberio, do you remember on April 7th, that seven mayor photo op? Well, you see, that night, Mayor Dodd from Dover told me he was forming a team. And when I went back for the Denville proclamation, I was really tired, and I said, when I spoke, I said, "So, Dover's forming a team." So Denville said, "Well, that sounds like a challenge." So the Denville Township Council formed a team. Well, two nights later, I went to Rockaway Borough, and I was kind of running with it, and I said to Rockaway Borough, "You're one of seven. We've got Denville and Dover." Rockaway Borough signed up a team. And we had our Randolph kickoff on May 4th, and guess what? What did Randolph do?
Formed a team.
Formed a team. Precipity, you are one of seven united communities. Are you ready to take that challenge?
I'm going to form a team.
Good answer.
By the way, it's not in any of the towns, by the way, it's not the mayor who serves as the team captain, it has to do with the clerk, or a secretary, or another council member. I just want to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thanks.
Mr. Saranelli?
So tonight, I thought I would spend a little bit more time than I might normally reviewing the budget, reviewing the audit.
Speak into it.
Talk directly into it. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the audit process. We started in the second week of February, and we left at the end of March. Ann and Ellen were very glad to see us disappear at that point in time. We spent a lot of time going over the transactions, and the audit was issued in the end of April. I'll go over some of the more relevant information that I think is most important. Last year, your current fund, fund balance was $6,449. You used $3,000, $3,580, and you regenerated $2,990 for an ending balance of 5.8 million. You know, there were some good things I saw through the financial statements. The tax collection rate in Precipity has traditionally been very good. The last three years, it was over 99%, with it being the highest this year at 99.32. So, you know, the fact that your fund balance was down a little bit, I tried to look through the financials and see what the reason for that was, and it really had to do with the unexpended balance of the previous year's reserves. Your revenues came in as expected, your appropriations were spent according to the plan, but the unexpended balance of the 2013 reserves that get canceled at the end of '14 were about $800,000 less than the 12 reserves that were canceled in '13. So what that means was the '14 budget was much tighter than the '13 budget, and that's what happens at the end of the next year, that unexpended balance gets folded back into fund balance. So pretty much the budget operated as planned, and just to give you, you know, a three-year history, the fund balance at the end of '12 was $6,085. At the end of '13, it was $6,449, so it was up a little, about $400,000, and now it's $5,860. So over a three-year period, it's down about $225,000. Not a dramatic change, I mean, that's a fairly stable place to be over a three-year period. Of course, you don't want to have continued decline, and, you know, you don't want to take too much of the taxpayers' money, so you've been trying to hit a pretty good balance, and I think for the most part, you've done that. A couple of other significant items, when I look on your balance sheet, the special emergency authorizations that you have for the storms and for the accrued sick and vacation, you have a pretty high balance at $2,735. You've passed emergency, special emergency appropriations, I think each of the last four years for payouts. You know, that's a pretty significant impact on every year's budget because now you have to raise one-fifth in each of the succeeding year's budgets. On the good side, you had a little over $1 million in the reserve for pending tax appeals. That's good planning, you know, some towns get caught and they have to issue debt for tax appeals, setting aside a million dollars, I thought was a good plan. The other trust fund, you know, the things that I noticed on your financial statements, you know, you had, you have a pretty significant balance in open space trust. At the end of last year, it was $5.4 million, at the end of this year, it's $6.2 million, so it increased by $800,000. Two of the items that I think you need to work on, and we're going to spend some time working on this year, are the workers' comp reserve and the employees' health benefit reserve. There's about $100,000 in each one of those, and I'll talk a little bit more, a little bit more about that when we get into the comment and recommendation section, but you need to handle those self-insurance funds a little bit differently, and you need to get state approval for that. And you do have enough, the good news is, the 2014 budget had good experience in health insurance, so you have a pretty good reserve. If you didn't, then we might be having a different conversation, but the health insurance reserve that was unexpended in '14 is significant enough to get you into a position to do the self-insurance funding the way you should. Two other things that I think are fairly new in the trust fund, you had the snow removal reserve increase from $200,000 to $400,000, and for the first time, you've set up an accumulated sick and vacation reserve of $312,000. That's, those are two good planning items, those are the kind of things the rating agencies like to see when they look at your financial statement. That will help you to improve your rating. In the capital fund, you have some pretty significant grants receivable still in the capital fund, carried over from last year, $9.2 million. We discussed with administration how they would pursue collecting that. So the total, total of all debt authorized and issued or unissued is about $74 million. It's just up slightly from last year. At the end of last year, it was $73,000, $73,000 and change, and basically, you paid a little over, about $6 million in debt down, and you authorized new debt of about $6 million. So that, that's a good plan to be on if you can keep it at that. $39 million of the debt that you have is in bonds, which is permanent now, you're paying principal and interest, and $20 million is in notes, and that rolls over each year. And you'll continue to roll that until you have your next permanent bond sale, probably in two or three years. Water utility was, you know, is in a sound financial position. You started the year at $4,796,000, you ended the year at $5,339,000, so that's up half a million dollars, you know, solid financial position, and the trend has been, you've been moving up in there. Not a lot of debt in the water utility. Water capital accounts, 4.2 in bonds and 2.2 in notes. The sewer utility, I'm sure you're familiar with, has a pretty significant fund balance. It was down a little bit from last year. You started the year at $11.2 and ended the year at just under $11 million. So it is a slight reduction, but again, it's a very healthy position. You need to be in a healthy position there because that, you have a significant amount of debt in your, in your sewer utility that you still need to pay, almost $22 million in permanent debt, and a little under $14 million in notes. The last fund, the golf and recreation utility, as most people know, the golf industry as a whole has been struggling, and I don't think your utility is any different than, you know, my experience with what I've seen with many golf courses. Your fund balance started at $186,000 and ended at $170,000. I think the operation is very tight there. That's not a lot of fund balance, the budget's over $4 million, and you're just sort of regenerating what you have there. Not a lot of debt in the golf, 1.4 million in bonds, and 782,000 in notes. So, that was the financial picture. You know, I know I threw out a lot of information in a short period of time. I do want to cover the compliance or, and the comment recommendation section also, and then if you had any questions. So the compliance section deals with all of the audit testing that we do to determine whether you're following the rules and regulations instead within the budgets, et cetera, that are dictated by the council. If you look in the back of the report, which most elected officials do, they pick up the book, turn right to the last page, there was 11 recommendations. So I don't think the number is that important, you know, depending on how detailed you want to get, I probably could have written 25, but I probably could have consolidated these into four or five. These were the 11 most important items that I thought needed to be addressed. I am going to open the audit and just highlight a few that I think specifically need to be addressed. And there also were two informal comments that we didn't make a formal recommendation on that were in last year's audit, and there was pretty significant improvement, and while the circumstance wasn't completely corrected, because there was only a five-month period between last, the last audit that you got in November or December, and this audit in April, you know, if we saw a tendency towards significant improvement, I didn't feel it warranted writing a full recommendation. So, I don't know if you have your book or not, but I'll say the four or five that I, of the 11 that I felt were most important that needed to be dealt with, in number order, was number three, a dedication by rider be obtained for all other trust funds. There are, there is an approval requirement of the Division of Local Government Services if you're going to spend funds separate from the budget. You do spend funds separate from the budget, and the only way you do that is get approval by dedication by rider, and while you have it for most funds, you don't have it for two of the items that I thought were most significant, where the workers' comp and the health benefit insurance that's operating. I guess really without Division's approval, I know it had been applied for, they rejected it, there are some specific requirements that you would need to implement. I talked about it with administration, they're aware of that. Item number four still deals with the police outside service. There was improvement in how that was accounted for, but it still need work, and we went over the details with the finance officer, and she knows what needs to be done. And just a little bit of history, obviously, you know, but, you know, you had a CFO, I think, who was here for close to 30 years, and then you changed CFOs twice in the last year and a half. And right now, you don't have an assistant, which you've always had in the past, and an accounts payable clerk you're operating without. So there's a lot going on, and there was some improvement, but there still are some improvement, some improvements to be made, and I think once you get a full complement of staff there, it will be a lot easier because we dealt with Ann directly for a month and a half, and besides working on the audit and working on the budget and trying to implement a new computer system and being short two people, it kind of felt like we were pulling her in a lot of directions. So I would also encourage you to, however that happens, to get that office fully staffed. Even, it's not a formal, it's not a recommend, an audit recommendation, but just something that I saw working here on the amount of hours that the CFO had to put in and being pulled in so many directions. And I think the outside police service would have been one of the things that would have been fully corrected had you, had, you know, you had a full complement of people there. You know, one of the things that we noticed that seems to be routine here is that the purchase orders are not being prepared prior to the purchase in a lot of cases. When it's a few, you know, not everything can be planned out, but there were a significant number of your purchases that were what I call a confirming order. Somebody went out and bought it, and then the invoice came in and the purchase order got prepared. That's a little bit backwards on how things should be done, and I think going forward, it's a much better control to know that only things are being purchased after availability funds has been certified by the chief financial officer. We spent a fair amount of time looking at the grants, grants receivable, unexpended balances of the grants, and, you know, there are, there's some work that needs to be done in that area to see if those grants are still collectible, if the funds are going to be expended, that they need to be expended, or that they need to be re-appropriated or returned. And then lastly, and I think probably most importantly, was that service management companies, which are the third-party administered self-insurance funds, there's special reporting. When you turn your funds over to a third party to expend on your behalf or a service, you're, you're sort of delegating that responsibility, and your only assurance that they're operating the way they say they are is for them to have an independent auditor, not me, they would hire their own, to do a special report called a SOC report, Service Organization Audit. And your third, your self-insurance provider hasn't had that in several years, we've contacted them. It's the only thing that really gives you assurance that that provider is following the controls that they're supposed to have in place to ensure that you're only paying for the bills that you're supposed to be paying. So we spent a lot of time on this and went over all the specifics, and not only is it good common sense for the town to have that, it's also statutorily required. So we need to get, chasing after them to make sure that they can get that, and because you haven't had it for at least three or four years from them, I also included a recommendation that you get surety coverage with, from them, naming Precipity on your own surety coverage so that, you know, if there was anything, and then, and I don't know because that's not part of my audit, those funds go to that outside provider, and that's outside my scope of my audit, but if anything did happen, at least you would have surety coverage to ensure you would be covered for any loss. So, that's the audit. You know, a couple thousand hours worth of work by a half a dozen people condensed into about 15 minutes. There's a lot that goes on here, you have, you know, three utilities, trust funds, capital, big current fund operation. So if there are any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Ray, I'd like to thank you for a comprehensive report. And thank our CFO for running in all directions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Barberio, Council President Carrifi, Councilman, Business Administrator Sandman, and CFO, and Cucci, et cetera. I'm very pleased to announce tonight that a year ago, I stood here as your president of the Stickley Museum at Craftsman Farms. My name is Barbara Weiss-Cuttell, and I introduce Vonda Givens as the acting executive director. Tonight, I am pleased to say she is the executive director of the Stickley Museum at Craftsman Farms. We'll be giving our presentation tonight. So I'd also, while I turn this over to Vonda, I'd also like to acknowledge in the room that we have many of our local volunteers and friends of the farms, and if you could just raise your hand here to show your support, thank you so much. Here's Vonda.
Council President, before Vonda begins, I just want to just point out that there are two resolutions on, so after her presentation, if anyone has questions with those two particular or resolutions that are on there, you can ask her this evening, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. They're pretty self-explanatory, but you'd be ready to answer that.
I'll be ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I also want to say thank you for inviting us tonight to speak, and it is a challenge to do this with the, the agenda is full, I'm aware of that, and I want to cover a year's worth of activities and then some in a short amount of time, but I promise I have
Here's Vonda.
Council President, before Vonda begins, I just want to just point out that there are two resolutions on. So, after her presentation, if anyone has questions with those two particular resolutions that are on there, you can ask her this evening, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're pretty self-explanatory, but you'd be ready to answer that.
I'll be ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I also want to say thank you for inviting us tonight to speak. And it is a challenge to do this with the, the agenda is full, I'm aware of that, and I want to cover a year's worth of activities and then some in a short amount of time, but I promise I have time myself, it can be quick, I'm going to do it as fast as I can. In the interest of time and Craftsman Farms popularity, I'm going to speed it along. I, a lot of you know that I'm a Southerner, I'm from a small town outside of Nashville, Tennessee, and speaking quickly is not something that comes naturally to us. So, you know, I'm going to do the best I can. I'm actually working from notes, which I don't often do, but it'll help me stay focused. So, if I, I'll try not to read, I'm going to try to make it as exciting as possible. So, with that in mind, let me get started here. So, the first thing I'll just say, if you're not aware of Craftsman Farms, it was the home of Gustav Stickley, who was an entrepreneur in the home furnishings business at the turn of the 20th century. And Stickley also was a visionary in the American Arts and Crafts Movement. And Stickley, like a lot of people, including me, came to New Jersey and saw here opportunity and inspiration. And I love this quote that he wrote about Craftsman Farms, "Deep in the sunny New Jersey hills." He came to build Craftsman Farms in Parsippany, New Jersey, and he lived here until 1917, and then he sold the property to a family named Farney. And the Farneys lived here on the property until about 1989. At that point, there was a resurgence of interest in Gustav Stickley around the country. And there was enough interest that people knew what Craftsman Farms was and what he had intended for it to be. So, there was an interest in trying to save the property, it was threatened with, with private development, and there was a referendum put on the ballot in 1988 to set aside open space funds to protect the property. And so, I've got some of the pivotal years, I'm not going to go through all of these things, but I just do want to point out how Craftsman Farms came to be a museum today. In 1989, the town council authorized the acquisition of Craftsman Farms. The next year, the Craftsman Farms Foundation was formed to preserve and protect Craftsman Farms and to interpret the site and manage its daily operations. Craftsman Farms opened to the public the next year, and it is, it was then also designated a national historic landmark, which is actually a difficult landmark status to achieve and something that we work hard to maintain. We are really proud of the successful partnership we've had with the township over our 25-year existence. And having been married for 22 years, I know that a 25-year partnership takes a lot of work and a lot of effort, and I haven't been a part of that this entire time, but I know what it takes. And we appreciate and don't take for granted this partnership, so that's important for everybody to know that. And we take our responsibility to protect Craftsman Farms very seriously. I wanted to point out a couple of the ways that we have partnered that I think have been especially valuable in the last few years. In 2008, we completed our historic site master plan, which is essentially a roadmap for preservation for any organization like ours. You want to make sure that you're planning for the future in the right way. We have nine buildings on the property, and it's easy to get, well, speaking as a director, it's easy to get overwhelmed and think, well, we have to do this, then we have to do that, we have to do that. So, this plan helps you make priorities. And we, we were able to do this plan with the help of the township, which agreed to put up $35,000 in seed money, which we then turned to the New Jersey Historic Trust and the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust for additional help to get the funds for that plan. Just a few years ago, we completed the fire suppression project, or we launched the fire suppression project. It took years to plan and to complete. We asked the township for $250,000 towards this project. It was vital to our future because if you haven't been to Craftsman Farms before, it's a 100-year-old building made of wood, and it needed to be protected. So, it is a sophisticated sprinkler system that ensures that it's protected for the future. We used the $250,000 as seed money to approach Morris County for additional funds. We had hoped for a 50% match, we got an 80% match, which was really exciting. And we completed the project on time and under budget, and you may recall that last January, we came back and asked to use those funds towards a different grant project, and that grant is now, we, the application is with Morris County, we're waiting to hear back from it. Today, we proudly serve 11,000 people per year. We have a core group of volunteers that is 65 people, that's from interns all the way up to every trustee who are all volunteers. We are open year-round, Thursday to Sunday, which means that we give 800-plus tours annually. We have approximately 85 programs per year, and we, last year, became a polling location in Parsippany, so that's something that we're proud of as well. Last year, we celebrated our 25th anniversary, and it was a year-long celebration. I've got pictures here from our Founder's Day, which was last year, Sunday, October 18th, and we appreciate all the people who came out to visit, including, of course, some nice VIP picture there. 2014 was an important year, not just because of our 25th anniversary. It was an important year for strategic planning, which I know from the outside, strategic planning doesn't sound exciting, but when you're a new director, it's something that's really important because you want to really know the organization. So, we spent a good deal of time last year looking back at our past 25 years and thinking ahead to where we wanted to be. And the first part of doing that really starts with looking at your mission statement, which we did revise. I'm not going to read it all here, it's on our, our mission statement is on our website. But the main difference is really that our focus, especially early on, was purely on preservation for the most part, because that was the biggest part of what needed to be done. More and more, we're focusing on audiences, we're excited to be able to do that, and that's the biggest shift in our mission statement currently. I'm going to spend the rest of my time up here just talking about the four points that are part of our strategic plan that gives you a sense of where we're headed in the future. Accreditation, I can dispense with pretty quickly because it's also something that's kind of internal, but just to explain what it is, accreditation is awarded by the American Association of Museums. It's a mark of distinction and essentially says that this museum is operating at its highest level. It's something we aim for, and it's a way to let funders like the township here know that we're, do, we're operating at our best, that we're trying to do our best. We won't do this tomorrow, it usually takes years to achieve. So, you'll hear about it in the coming years, but it's something that we're committed to working on. Financial health makes most not-for-profits strategic plan, I would imagine, and we're no different. We have for 15-plus years self-funded our general operations, and right now, that means raising around $500,000 every year. And I do want to be clear that when the township is generous with us with preservation funds, if you're not aware, that doesn't go to pay my salary or anybody else's salary at Craftsman Farms, it's not allowed to do that. We have to raise our, the money that we make to pay our salaries. If you go to a program at Craftsman Farms, any activity is paid for out of our general operations. Preservation money is protected, it should be, that's how it should be. And so, we're very careful with the money that we're given, and, you know, I think that preservation money that's set aside for those uses, that it's, it's my responsibility to make sure that that's what it's used for. So, we are working on making sure that our financial health is strong for the next five years and beyond. And of course, building our donor base is important and maximizing our revenue sources. One of the ways to do that is to expand our facilities. And if, you know, most museums are always looking for ways to bring more people in, to build more revenue, and we're no different than that. We want more programs, we want exhibition space, and more room for our growing staff would be nice as well. We came to the council two years ago and talked about some of these needs, and at that point, we requested funding towards helping us explore using two particular buildings on the property. And I wanted today to just give an update on those grant funds and where we are with them. The first three projects of the five are pretty straightforward. We are nearly, nearly complete with the first project, exterior maintenance. Now that we have nice weather, again, we can pick back up with painting on the exterior of the house. The north and south cottage construction documents are complete, and in fact, we've used those documents to apply for construction grant, and that's what was matched with the fire suppression funds. Exterior lighting, if you voted on our property, we're aware that we really need exterior lighting, and we're going to, we're working on that. So far, we have done planning and design on it. We've had a couple of people who've donated work to that, to that particular project, and so we haven't incurred expenses. We're hoping to hold on to the money we have for actual lighting, which we can use the most of the money for the actual lighting. The two biggest projects in the 2013 grant were to rehabilitate the White Cottage, which we were looking to use for our staff, that was our plan. And with the 2013 funding, we were able to launch a feasibility study. Again, it was done for free for, by an architect on our board who offered to do the study. He also completed a stabilization plan on the building. The building has significant deterioration. We were, we knew that it was there, we were a little surprised by the state it's in, we need to address the mold issue there. Like a lot of old buildings, it has asbestos, it has lead paint, and we want to address all of those. That's part of the stabilization project, and it's really the first phase. We've done an environmental study and a remediation plan, and all of that is necessary, particularly because it's an original building. And even still with all of that, it won't be as expensive as building a new building for this use. So, the feasibility study that we did showed us that it's not the best fit for putting our staff in this building. It's disappointing to learn it because it had been something that had been in our minds for a while. But the good news is, is it's why you do a feasibility study, to see what the best use is for the building. It doesn't allow us any space for our staff to expand it from its current size. There are issues with parking and with handicap accessibility as well, but we will use a feasibility study and the stabilization plan to make a plan for the building. As I mentioned before, we need program space, we need exhibition space, we're going to be looking for other ways to build revenue, and we'll also be preserving the building at the same time. And final, oh, I'm sorry, I should also say that our next goal with this building is we are a good candidate for a grant from the New Jersey Historic Trust. I know I'd forget this, this is what the resolution is about. We are pursuing a grant from the New Jersey Historic Trust for a, the work we want to do on the White Cottage. The grant requires a knowledge of the owner of the property, which is the township, to support the grant, and also it asks for a match. And we're asking to use the funds from the 2013 grant to apply for this as a $100,000 match for the application. And the final project in the 2013 grant was the administration building, which is the building you see here. Our idea was that we would move the staff, which is in this upper floor that the arrow points to, from that building over to the White Cottage, and then we'd do some kind of simple renovation work on this, this upper floor. The upper floor is not original to the property, and it has fewer historic restrictions. However, if we're not moving the staff, it changed our vision of this building, and we started looking at it, instead of just doing one floor, what if we looked at the whole building? This picture is actually sort of deceptive because the building is a lot bigger than it looks. This is the back of the building. You can see there's this entire basement floor that is like a, it's actually was a garage in the Stickley era. It's, it's a really nice rock building. And we started looking at the entire building and launched a feasibility study to see if it could accommodate the staff growth, the exhibition space and the program space, and it's, it's turning out to be exciting, and we think that it will lead us where we need to go. It's surprising sometimes when one, you think you're going one direction, then maybe there's even a better plan in your future. So, I hope to be invited back to talk about this project in the future. We're going to continue on with the feasibility study and learn more about it. In summary, our open space grant funds, we have four or five projects in process, one is completed. We have contributed $45,000 in free work on the projects we've been doing, and we're applying next to expand our funds with a grant from the New Jersey Historic Trust, and that's what our resolutions are about, extending the grant agreement so we can complete the projects and support of the grant and support of the match. And my last quick part is the last part of our strategic plan, expanding our audience. And all of the parts of the strategic plan work together. This happens to be the most fun part of the plan for me because I love bringing people to Craftsman Farms. We want people of all ages to come and enjoy Craftsman Farms, and enjoy it and really experience it the way that Stickley intended. Last Saturday was our Spring Family Day. Our next Family Day is Saturday, September 19th. It's easily our biggest family event of the year, we usually have six or 700 people on the property. So, if you haven't come to that event before, we especially want you to attend. And before that, we are bringing back something that we did last year. We wanted our Parsippany neighbors to celebrate our 25th anniversary with us, and it went over really well. So, we want to bring our Parsippany neighbors back in. And through the months of July and August, on Thursdays, you can come as a resident of Parsippany for admission for a dollar, and all you have to do is come in and tell us that you live in Parsippany. You might be surprised by how many people suddenly live in Parsippany on that day, but they're all welcome too. So, we want to invite you to come on a summer Thursday in July and August. If you haven't been, it's a great day to come and visit and pay a dollar and see what Gustav Stickley envisioned of the property and the place that I get to work every day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just, just an observation, if I may, because Vonda's done a great job. The White Cottage that she mentioned, the efforts that we're putting into that is strictly to prevent it from decaying any further. Restoration for it for some future use will happen at a later time, we just do not want to let it decay any further. Right? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our presentation on the Knoll Golf Utility.
Thank you.
Glenn Focell, Golf Superintendent, Mr. Mayor, Council President Creefy, council members, on behalf of the USGA, Mr. Dave Otis.
Okay. Sweet.
I like it, nice and shortened. Sweet, thank you.
It's all right, I'll move back here, and that way I can glance at the screen and then keep eye contact with you. So, I was asked to speak about your golf course and more specifically irrigation, and I may give you more information about irrigation than you've ever wanted to know, but it's important because that's how you're going to make a good decision on whether or not to go forward with a new irrigation system. But I thought it was amazingly apropos that this presentation comes back, comes after a presentation about the Stickley Museum, because this is another museum piece. It was designed by Charles Banks, who was a master architect, he operated in the golden age of architecture, and this is a great example of some of his best work. So, it is a really, really fine golf course. It's not just a golf course, it's a really special one. So, let's talk about irrigation. If I turn this on, it might work better. A lot of things have changed over the years. Golfers' expectations have gotten a lot higher, and as they've gotten higher, cutting heights on turf have gotten lower. That's increased the stress level on the turf. And the other thing that you've probably read a lot about recently is water shortages. There's a huge issue in the western part of the United States, we've had plenty of droughts here. Bottom line is water's getting more expensive all the time, it's being appreciated more for the precious commodity that it is, and there's increasing pressure all the time to use it more wisely, and frankly, not to use potable water if you can avoid it. There's lots of other sources for many applications. The other important thing to remember is how much irrigation technology has improved, how much it's advanced. And the best analogy, I think, for most people is it's about like your computers. So, if you think back to 1980s, when you had your first computer, it was probably an IBM XT, and it did not much more than process words, that was about it. Your smartphone, your calculators today do more than those computers did, and that's the same way irrigation technology has advanced. We have put a vast amount of science and technology into it, and your irrigation system on that golf course was originally installed 37 years ago, so it is very, very old technology. It has been updated, but it's something that needs to be addressed. So, you know, why do you even care? Well, the goal of this golf course, I would assume, is to provide good playability. I think this has to be the goal for every successful golf course, be reasonable to maintain, certainly be environmentally sound, be sound fiscally, and basically cut back on inputs to the extent that's possible. And I'm talking about labor, fertilizer, pesticides, all those sorts of things. Let's make it as efficient an operation as possible so that it has the smallest footprint possible. At the end of the day, you have to have reliable turf. If you have turf that bales at the drop of a hat, you've got a real problem on your hand because all of your revenue is dependent on turf quality, as you, as you would know. So, we need a ton of things to accomplish those goals, key people, educated and experienced, a lot of specialized tools, sound agronomic programs that I'm not going to go into, but the bottom point there is really the most important, water management. That's the most important thing a turf manager does. And when you think of water management, you're, and of course, my title is Irrigation 101, so you're immediately thinking of irrigation, and the truth is, water management... And the truth is, water management is not just irrigation. As a matter of fact, that's a little bit less than half of the equation. It's really important to put it on accurately, but it's really a little bit more important to take it off rapidly when you have too much. And that's especially important at, at the Knoll because you don't have good soils on that site. They're rocky, they're heavy, they don't drain. I would call them unforgiving, meaning once they get wet, they're going to tend to stay wet. When they dry out, they may actually get hydrophobic, meaning they'd be hard to re-wet. So the application of water at a course like Knoll with your soil conditions is even more critical than at a lot of other golf courses. So drainage is number one, closely followed by irrigation. And of course, to have an effective irrigation system, there are a bunch of things you need for that as well. Water volume, you have to have it at the right volume, the right pressure, you have to have reasonable quality, you have to have a sound delivery system, that's the irrigation system. And we get so caught up, I think, sometimes in turning sprinklers on and off, the control system, that's what does that. And not to minimize that, it's very important to time sprinklers coming on and off as accurately as possible, but uniform distribution, meaning the sprinkler heads themselves, if they don't apply water uniformly, really doesn't matter how often you turn them off and on. You're not going to have an even distribution of water. So these other features are very important, flexible, accurate control, efficient, reliable. Bottom line is, you also need a complement of competent technicians to operate it and to maintain it. Irrigation systems require constant monitoring and constant maintenance. And even if you put in a perfect irrigation system, don't think for a minute that you'll ever get rid of hoses because they are not perfect, and we manage turf very aggressively. We keep it under stress. And so the importance of meeting the accurate water needs of turf throughout the course, but especially on greens, really has to come down to using a hose and carrying it around by hand and applying it only where it's needed. So I talked about coverage uniformity, and that is absolutely essential. And more control is better, meaning the more able you are to change times on a percentage basis, turn different sprinkler heads and combinations of heads on and off, that's all critical. It's all done via computer these days. And the other key thing is you need more and smaller sprinklers, because if you have large sprinklers, they cover large areas, and the individual water requirements within those water larger areas may differ substantially. So having more and smaller sprinklers with uniform distribution is really the way to go. That gives you the ultimate in terms of control. You also need a narrow irrigation window. What's that? Well, that's the time it takes to water the whole golf course. Your current water irrigation window is over 12 hours, which means you basically don't have the ability to get caught back up if you get behind. So as you get dry weather, maybe the irrigation system doesn't run, suddenly you're really behind and you can't really get caught up. It's going to probably be a rain event that's going to get you caught back up. And if you go weeks without one, you'll have problems. So you want to be able to water the entire golf course in as narrow a window of time as possible, four to six hours is what I would recommend. It helps you water less, believe it or not. It's kind of like having a big engine in a car. Yes, it does allow you to speed if you use it that way, but it also is a safety feature because it allows you to pull out on a highway and get out of the way of an oncoming car a little bit more rapidly. So having a higher output system allows you to wait till the last minute or even later to irrigate, and that will cut down on your disease issues. Certain diseases like Dollar Spot take 12 hours of continuous moisture to infect the plant. So if you're starting at 8:00 PM to irrigate, you're finishing at 8:00 AM, well, guess what? You've got your 12-hour window. So you're really playing into the hands of that disease and others. So having the ability to apply more water more quickly doesn't mean that you're going to do it, but it's really a safeguard because it allows you to wait longer and longer to make that decision to water. And if a rain event materializes and you haven't irrigated, boy, your course is drier, your turf is healthier, you've saved the water. If it doesn't rain and you have to wait until the next morning, you can apply a lot of water very quickly, keep the turf out of, from major stress. And again, you've got better playability, healthier turf, and, and you've conserved water. So when you have an old system such as yours and it's replaced, water usage usually goes down. And that's because the water currently being applied by your system is being applied so inaccurately. It's not an operator error, it just does not have the ability to apply water uniformly. And given that you spend, you have budgeted anyway, $125,000 a year for irrigation water, which is extremely high, I might add, boy, it makes sense to, to scrutinize that water budget really closely and make that system as efficient as you can. The other question is, can you get off of that, off of potable water at some point in the future? And I'm not here to talk about that today, but I'm planting a seed. That's something you need to think about because there will come a day when we have an extreme drought, and you may not have the ability to irrigate the golf course because the water will be needed for, for us humans. And that's why most other golf courses utilize different sources for irrigation. They're usually having reservoirs on the property, they're fed by wells, streams, runoff, maybe a combination of those things. Courses frequently use recycled water as well, that's always an option you could consider. Now I get into the really cool stuff. This is how a sprinkler works. And if you look at this diagram, hopefully it's not too confusing, but I have a sprinkler there and a sprinkler over there, they're 90 feet apart, and this is how many inches an hour they're going to put out. Now, doesn't matter what sprinkler you buy, they generally are going to have a wedge-shaped profile, meaning most of the water that a sprinkler puts out is put out right next to the head. And not surprisingly, the farther you get from the sprinkler head, the progressively less the water puts out. So if you have one sprinkler out there, you're going to have a green center around the sprinkler, and then you're going to have progressively less water being put out farther away, and it'll get drier and drier, which is why we have back-to-back coverage, or head-to-head coverage, I should say. So we have two sprinklers, 90 feet apart, each throwing this wedge-shaped profile, and when you match them up, you actually find out that you have perfectly even coverage. So this sprinkler head is putting a lot more water out over here, this one's putting it out at a great, greater rate over here, but together they match, and, and you have very uniform coverage. Now this is a gross oversimplification, it's a lot more complicated than this, this is a key point that you have to remember. So these are perfectly matched sprinkler heads, you've got perfect coverage. So you don't have perfectly matched sprinkler heads on your golf course, and I'll explain more about that in a minute. But here's two mismatched heads, and we put them together. This is the same profile that you saw on the previous slide. Well, here's a smaller head that doesn't put out as much, and it doesn't throw it as far. And when we clip these two together, you can see that we're putting almost two inches of water in out over, an hour out over here, and less than an inch an hour over here. So if this area is obviously dry, what do you do? You run the sprinklers longer, and this area gets progressively wetter. So you can't win if you don't have uniform distribution, period, dot. Now, you have different types of coverage on your golf course. You have quite a few holes that have single row coverage, meaning one row of sprinklers right down the center line of the fairway. Some other fairways have double row. But let's just show what it looks like when we have single row coverage. These yellow circles represent the throw of each of these sprinklers. And you'll see a green line appearing there. Now that means that the center line of that fairway has relatively consistent moisture being applied by those sprinklers in that arrangement. But as you get farther out to the, from the fairway, you'll see irrigation fall off. Now, where we have overlap, we actually have fairly uniform coverage there. So we've got uniform coverage here, and in all of these scallops, it's relatively uniform. But by definition, with this type of coverage, you've got gaps or scallops. So when your fairways dry out, if you can think back at a time during the summer, you would see these little wedge-shaped areas on the perimeter of every fairway that get progressively drier, and it's simply because you have no ability to apply water at the rate they need it. And how do you compensate? Well, if you throw more water out to get your perimeters wetter, you got wet and soggy fairway centers. And if you say, well, I'm going to maintain turf quality for the center line of the fairway, well, then our perimeters are going to burn up. So you really, as I said before, you can't win if you don't have uniform coverage, and with single row coverage, you really can't have very uniform coverage. It's also a real challenge at Knoll because your golf course is unique. It was originally built with very, very large fairways. I would guess 40 or probably 50 acres of fairways. They're considerably smaller than that now, but they've been, being expanded back to, more to their original shapes. And as you do that, you find that your perimeters of fairways just simply are not getting enough water, and that'll affect turf quality. So, you know, what do you, how do you, how do you solve that? Well, the typical next step is to install double-row irrigation systems. And when I go back two, couple of slides, the theory for many years, and when this golf course was, had this irrigation system installed 37 years ago, the theory was get the biggest sprinkler head you could, put it in the middle of the fairway, and then blast it out into the rough as far as you could. So you've got water cannons down the center line of these fairways. And they're efficient in that there's a few, relatively small number of sprinkler heads, and they're covering a vast area, but they're not applying water uniformly, and that's the real challenge here. So the next step in irrigation design was go to two-row, and you have this on about eight holes, as I recall. So we have a main line down the, the side of the hole, lateral lines going across, and two sprinkler heads. And not surprisingly, the uniformity of the coverage, assuming the sprinkler heads are properly matched, it's much, much better. Now, it'll still fall off on the perimeters of your, of every golf hole out here, but the main playing corridor from just into the rough on one side to just into the rough on the other, you'll be able to maintain pretty good turf quality, and you'll have pretty uniform distribution, again, assuming the right sprinklers are used. The challenge here is that you've got difficult soils in the fairways, you have worse soils in the rough, you also have lots of traffic in the rough from carts, and you have trees. And trees are soil robbers. They're competing very effectively for the moisture and the fertilizer that you're putting out there for the turf. So the turf in the rough, it's longer, and it actually needs more water than the turf in the fairways does, but it gets less. So you've got a, a bit of an issue. Still, though, a two-row system would go a long way towards improving this golf course. I will tell you that some courses now put out four rows, meaning they put another series of part circle sprinklers here that just point out so that the rough can be watered independently. You certainly could do that, but it's a big expense, and I'm not sure I'd want to go there, given your, your Spartan budget. Now, I want to spend a little bit of time on sprinkler heads and spacing. Your sprinkler heads basically are 1960 technology. They're very large sprinklers, they, they're put in on very wide spacing, mostly single-row. Well, sorry, 10 fairways are single-row and eight fairways are double-row. The fairways are, the fairway sprinklers are all controlled individually, so that's a very good thing. You don't want to run sprinklers in pairs because you're unable to control the water as accurately as you, as you want to be able to if they're not run individually. So they're large, that's not a good thing, they're run individually, that is a good thing. On your tees, we have another story altogether. You actually have an average of three sprinkler heads on each tee on the golf course, per hole, I should say. But in many cases, that means there's one sprinkler head on a tee. If you remember what that profile looked like, the distribution profile looked like for a single sprinkler head, you can't have even distribution of water on a tee with only a single head there. Worse yet, you have all three heads being operated by one valve. You can't turn one head on or one head off, they all work or none of them work. So as a turf manager, you say, well, where am I going to manage moisture for? The wetter, shadier, the more pocketed area that needs a lot less water, or the high, dry, sunnier locations that need a lot more water? With this arrangement, you, you can't possibly win. It's, it's physically not possible unless you spend a lot of time out there with hoses, and given the number of tees and the size and the size of your maintenance staff, it's not practical. So sprinkler heads continued. You have six different models. Now, I did not check what the distribution profiles are of them, but the bottom line is if you have different sprinkler heads, they all have different profiles, they're not going to match up very well. So you, by, by definition of having six different models of sprinklers on your golf course, you have a pretty significant distribution problem. The spacing between sprinklers is very important as well. Now, it's wide on fairways, but it's consistent. If it's, if it varies from 80 to 100, now you've got a whole nother set of problems. You're at least pretty consistent at 90 on, on fairways, but the spacing of sprinkler heads around greens is really erratic, and that's another problem. And that's exacerbated by the fact that all of your greens were much bigger when the course was originally built. They shrank years and years and years ago. The sprinkler system was put in 37 years ago after the greens had gotten smaller. And now, in an effort to put the course more, back more towards its original design, the greens have to be expanded, and guess what? You have sprinkler head, pipe and wire under all of the greens. And there's an old Murphy's Law that comes to play pretty much every time if you have a pipe in, under a green, it'll be sound, if you have a pipe in the ground, it'll be sound until you expand a green out over the top of it, and then it will break. And when that happens, you have a real mess on your hands. So this is not the Knoll. I'll show you a picture of the Knoll in a minute. This is another very old golf course that I photographed a number of years ago, but this is essentially what you have here at the Knoll. So that's about where the sprinklers are, that's the irrigation pipe by the dotted line. That black line indicates the original shape of the green. And so all those flag sticks there are on what was originally part of the green. And you have this exact same scenario on pretty much every green on this golf course. So if it were one or two greens, you could say, hey, we'll just move the pipe and wire on these, but you have to do every single one of them. And because that changes the spacing between the sprinkler heads, it just gets incredibly complex. It, it means it needs to all be redone. Now, this is the Knoll, the fourth green. The arrow indicates a sprinkler head, and I don't know exactly where the pipe is, but that's probably a pretty good guess. And I will also tell you that this green has been expanded obviously quite a bit. It was probably in here a number of years ago. The need, the green needs to get actually quite a bit bigger too. So your greens are not done being expanded, they've got a long way to go, and you really can't do too much more of it without moving a lot of pipe and wire. And that's Murphy's Law. That's a golf course on Long Island that had a pipe under a green that broke, and it's an unintentional water hazard. So let's talk real quickly about coverage. You have perimeter irrigation, which is a separate system of sprinkler heads designed to water the banks around the greens. There's part circles pointing outward. Again, like the roughs, the, the grass on the banks around greens is longer, and it needs more water than the putting green turf does, but because of the typical arrangement of sprinkler heads, it gets less. So most courses combat that by putting in a perimeter irrigation system. So you have it on 11 or 12 holes, and on the holes that don't have it and the rest of the rough, they just receive a little bit of overspray. So when you get some irrigation, or when you get some rain events, the rough will grow. When you don't, it's not going to grow much. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, but when turf goes dormant, it thins out, and then you have more weed encroachment. So if I were to characterize the distribution and coverage throughout the entire golf course, I would, you know, I'd be less than honest if I called it anything other than extremely poor and extremely non-uniform. So, and it really affects your drainage. I don't think anyone truly appreciates how big an impact a new system with really good uniformity would have on the appearance, the playability of the golf course, and the health of the turf, et cetera, et cetera. It'll, it'll have an extraordinary impact. Real quickly, some other problems. The pipe is 37 years old, the PVC pipe. Most irrigation systems, they plan on them lasting at least in years past, or 20, maybe 30 years. You can keep an old system going ad infinitum, but it takes a constant flow of parts and labor, and at the end of the day, they don't really perform the way you want them to. You have galvanized, sorry, galvanized swing joints under every single sprinkler head, they corrode. As that corrosion flakes off, it clogs sprinkler heads and leads to more leaks. Leaks in this system are extremely common, three per week on average, an hour or so or more to repair them. And because of that corrosion, that gets into the sprinkler heads that each have valves in them, and it causes them to stick on or, or not come on, either one, which is a bad thing. Now, there are many isolation valves in the, in the system, but they're so old and corroded, they don't longer work. But if you have a leak, you may have to shut down the entire golf course to fix it. And on a hot day in the middle of July, or after you've put down a fertilizer application or a pest control product, if you can't irrigate it in, it could mean two things. Number one, the turf gets severely injured by an application, or you've just wasted the money on the product because it won't work unless it's irrigated in. And that's a, a common problem with a system like this. The control system was updated 17 years ago, but control systems are only supported for about 15 to 20 years or so. But you can still get parts for your control system, but don't hold your breath, it won't, that won't be the case much longer. I talked about that narrow irrigation window, yours is over 12 hours. Well, that's because you only have 1,000 gallon pumping capacity, 1,000 gallon a minute pumping capacity. Most new systems of this, on a course of this size, would be 1,500 to over 2,000 gallons per minute pumping capacity, so you'd probably want to double it. And I already explained why that's important. You really, because of that limited pumping capacity and the limited control, you have a difficult time... a difficult time syringing fairways, also because you have such large heads. Basically, this system wasn't designed to give you really good turf without, without rainfall. It was a supplement to rainfall, to get you from one rain event to the next. And with golfers increasing expectations and the increased pressure we put on the turf through lower cutting heights and all those sorts of things, it doesn't work out very well. So I'm going to conclude with a quick chart of key factors. Uniform distribution, your current system doesn't have it. The proposed obviously would. And I can go through this pretty quickly because, as you might guess, your system has a lot of deficiencies. Individual head control, you really want it everywhere, and you actually do have it on fairways and greens, but you don't have it on tees, and you're, you're obviously very deficient in all those other areas, which are critical to performance. Same thing with the second checklist. I'll go through them quickly. You know, you have a limited syringing capacity with the current system, and you do have a good map. That's great. Problem is, it's sadly outdated. And the last point is not unimportant. Quick couplers are just small metal valves that you can plug a hose into quickly. You have them on greens, you have none on tees, and you have few scattered about in fairways. You would want a lot more so that you can access water very quickly in lots more different areas around the golf course. So I mentioned this a minute ago, but I think it's a good point to leave you with regarding irrigation. You can keep them running ad infinitum, but they waste money. You know, it's, it's, it's like having a really old race car. They're fun to drive, but they're not going to win the Indy 500 anymore, and they're very expensive to maintain. And it is, the irrigation system, that is, is a major limiting factor towards any kind of a significant improvement in turf quality. And it will have an enormous impact on playability, and as I said earlier, drainage. I think the impact irrigation's having is, is pretty substantial. And I'm going to conclude with just a few comments about practice facilities. The key thing with practice is that its popularity has increased dramatically in the last ten, maybe twenty years. I do a lot of consultation visits throughout the northeast region, New York, New Jersey, New England, Pennsylvania, southern Canada, and practice facilities come up on, as a major topic of discussion on a high percentage of the visits, probably thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent of the visits some years. People have time constraints. They don't have enough time to play golf as often as they would like, so they are more apt to play nine holes. They're much more apt to practice. Old courses generally were not built with practice in mind. That was a, something that came much, much later, but it's the one part of the game, I would argue, that is growing, and it's a major, major attraction for courses to get new members, having a good practice facility. Courses that have them have the ability to draw new members much, at a much higher rate than courses that do not. It is a major handicap. And here at the Knoll, because you have so many golfers, I would call it a huge lost opportunity. It's a good revenue stream, and it's an opportunity for you to teach golf and to introduce golf to people that would like to give it a try, but that just don't have an easy access to it. You can start at a driving range and get started, and if you like it, then you can graduate to go onto the golf course. So it's a, it's a major handicap, and it's a huge lost opportunity. So with that, I will conclude. I'm not sure if I went over my time limit. I apologize if I did, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I have a question for you. Over here.
Yes, sir.
One of the bank's trademarks is to have well-bunkered greens.
Yes.
And that, and pretty steep banks. When you're talking about irrigation, is that being included with the greens that the, you irrigate those banks also?
With a course of this type, almost, the vast majority of the courses, I would say, you need four to six sprinklers around greens, and, and I'm not going to pretend that I could design your irrigation system. That's, that's a very specialized thing. But you need a system of whole circle sprinklers for the greens. Generally, four will do it, but perhaps more. And then you need a separate system, a separate row of perimeter irrigation heads that are part circles located at the top of the banks, pointing outward just to water the banks. Now, they could be spray heads, they could be street, small stream rotors, they could be drip irrigation, lots of different ways to do it. But yeah, I think you need a separate system for those banks if you want to keep them out of dormancy. And because of the traffic bunker banks receive because of sand being blasted out onto them, and by the fact that grass is longer, and particularly on south-facing slopes that heat up and use more moisture, I think you'd be, if you put in a new system, I would strongly recommend putting in a surround system or a perimeter system to accommodate that.
Thank you.
Quick question. What's the cost involved for the improvements that you've been talking about? Ballpark?
It could easily be two million dollars if you said, hey, we want to go for that four-row system that I briefly described. It could be more than that. A big part of the expense is the installation. A big part of the expense here is your uniquely difficult soils.
I have a question for you. I don't want to think I'm a wise guy. Is there any good news about our golf course there? Because it seems like our patience passing away here.
No. It's, as I said earlier, you have an incredible golf course. It's, you cannot buy the architecture and the character it has. It's really in a very unique class of golf courses. C.B. McDonald is roundly acknowledged as one of the greatest architects in history. He built National Golf Links. That was his, his crowning achievement. And he trained two gentlemen that worked with him. One was Seth Rayner, and the others, the other was Charles Banks. And if you play any of the golf courses built by those three individuals, you'll be able to tell within a hole or two who built it because they were so unique. They, they probably weren't appreciated in their day, but we appreciate them now as geniuses, and you've got a great example of a Charles Banks golf course, and that's a, it's a really, really valuable thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to ordinances, second readings, and public hearings. Okay, ordinances, status of adopted ordinances?
Now, by no comments, that means that it'll be on for next week. Is that correct?
For those two?
For those two.
Yes.
Council President, before we go, may I just two things into the record at the administration with regard to energy savings, if that's okay? May I address that, and then I will hand out my report? You went from mayor to administration. Are we on administration now? You went right to ordinance.
Well, no, that's next on our agenda. Okay. Okay, status of adopted ordinances? Ordinance two thousand fifteen, colon zero three, colon zero four, and colon zero five. Adopted date, April twenty-fifth, April twenty-first, two thousand fifteen. May oral action, May first, two thousand fifteen. Effective date, May twenty-first, two thousand fifteen. Discussion reminders. I just have one thing. I've spoken recently, in the last few days, to some of our volunteer firefighters, and apparently, I know we had the chief of police here for the budget hearing our last meeting, and he discussed the radio communications. Apparently, that problem that he said was taken care of has risen again, and I guess recently on a fire, they were unable to communicate with some of the firemen on a call.
I can respond to that. I spoke to the deputy chief yesterday with regards to that. Yes, it was pretty much resolved, and it did act up again yesterday. So we are going to take a very aggressive stance and find out. I'm not at liberty to say what we might know, but at, at the best, I could tell you is that, you know, it seems to act up at certain times for certain reasons. So I really can't elaborate on that.
Okay. So we might know what the problem is then, basically?
Yeah, we're working.
Okay, good. Good.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in, in piggybacking on what the mayor said, yeah, perhaps we can talk a little bit about it in closed session.
Okay.
Because there is a...
Okay. No, I mean, as long as we're working on it. Because I know the chief had said that it had been addressed, it was taken care of, but now I guess just within the last couple of days, it popped up again.
In the closed session, we'll give you some input into what, why, why that happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I do see that we've approved the salary ranges for blue-collar supervisors and white-collar salary ranges. But weren't we supposed to have the police on tonight's list?
No, that was taken off of the agenda.
Why was it taken off the agenda?
Why was it taken off the agenda? Well, we were supposed to be provided, we were having a finance committee meeting on Wednesday, and we were supposed to be provided with information that we were told we were going to get on Wednesday.
Okay, I sent you...
Obviously, our meeting's Wednesday, tonight's Tuesday, so...
Here's what I, I would like to say. I sent you two emails yesterday. I don't know if you received them or not, Council President, but these contracts have been fully negotiated, and I think it's time that we put them on. I, you know, I've been going back and forth with the PBA president and with his council, and you know what? We need to put it up for a vote. So at least next meeting, May nineteenth, and after we meet tomorrow, let's put, we need to put it on.
Okay, Mayor, at our finance committee meeting, you said you were going back to the PBA to discuss things that we agreed upon at the finance committee meeting, but we've, we haven't been reported back, and we can't report back to the council.
I guess we, this negotiation, we didn't agree upon that. We agreed upon the talk, but we didn't agree upon what we, what we'd get. I did go back. I sent you an email saying I went back, and it stated that this contract has now been fully negotiated with the PBA president, and I'm ready to move forward with it. So after tomorrow's finance committee meeting, I truly am ready to move forward with it.
So how do we know what was, was there anything changed?
Well, I sent you an email, said nothing was changed, other than the fact that...
Okay.
Thank you.
So there's your answer, Mr. DePiero.
Okay.
Scheduled meetings, May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, at six P.M. Budget hearing.
Council President, you may be aware that on May fourteenth, at five-thirty, there's a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Sipney Hills High School. I'd like you to move this back to six-thirty, so I could attend both.
Any council members have a problem?
I'm in favor.
Six-thirty tomorrow?
Six-thirty.
May fourteenth.
Okay.
The Thursday meeting?
Right.
And what do we, what?
The budget meeting?
Do we have to announce that?
Do we have to? Do we have time to?
You have to advertise it.
Do we have to advertise it?
We don't have time?
We don't have time.
Okay, then I may be late to our budget meeting.
Five minutes it'll be.
Five minutes or so.
Yeah.
You have to commence the meeting at six. You don't have to do anything until six-thirty.
It was tonight.
Okay. All right, May nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, at seven-thirty P.M. Regular meeting. June ninth, two thousand fifteen, at seven-thirty P.M. Agenda meeting. Minutes for approval, none? Mayor?
I listened to you. Pretty much said before what I was going to say, so, okay, you can move forward. Administration?
Administration?
Yes, thank you very much. Prior to going into the discussion with regard to the bids taken, I'm pleased to report that the energy savings that we did receive, let me state it for the record, and then I'll pass out the report. Over the next eighteen months, the township will experience an impressive two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-forty dollars in energy cost savings as a result of our networking with other communities and the electric bid process. Below, you'll find a schedule that shows that we will be doing tremendous, a tremendous amount of savings, a reduction by approximately twelve-point-three percent. So I'm pleased we stayed and, and, and pushed forward on networking with other communities and get this energy savings. So that's a significant result. We're very pleased with that. Secondly, this Saturday, the Smith Baldwin House, we had the walkthrough with the members of the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust Fund Review Board, and I would like to thank Mike Hardy and Eric, our architect, and myself. We, we, we did attend what we believe to be, was, they were very impressed with the Smith Baldwin House. I don't think anybody could not be, but with Randy's great communication skills on, on just the value of this, another, another jewel in, in, we've talked about the golf course and Krieffman Farms, and the Smith Baldwin House is right up there. So I believe we're going to be very successful in receiving the first round of funding for the planning for the Smith Baldwin House. I've just put three other items on here that do not need to be read into the record. They refer to the mulch program a little more detail, gov deals and vehicle leasing program, which will help with our budget, budget savings. So I will distribute that to you so you have it. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to quotations, proposals, qualifications. Any questions? Ordinances?
I just want to say for the record, I had a conversation with Ellen in reference to the sale of mulch and landscaping material. There'll be a cost savings for us with this pilot program, so it's actually a very good program. But we did discuss a number of things at the budget process, including the coloring of mulch and the sale of it. This will not include the colored mulch. It'll just be regular mulch for now.
At this time, yes.
At this time.
And that's due to the logistics. We want to make sure it works. We want to start out with the, the basic and then move forward from there. And it can only go up in, we initially think the September kickoff will provide for approximately this year a seventy-five-thousand-dollar savings, and only go in next year more, about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. Okay, resolutions? Any questions, concerns? Okay, Township Office reports, engineering report?
There is no council action required for any of the ones on the report.
Chief Financial Officer?
Yes, there'll be two resolutions next week, one of which is already included in your package for the certification of the annual audit that you're going to report on, and also the corrective action plan, which you'll have before the end of the week.
Thank you. Attorney?
Nothing for open, but Ms. Patatchi, I do have information for you. No, I have information for you tonight relative to the questions that you've raised, and I'll be happy to share it with you.
Okay, Township Officers, committees. Communications, correspondence, none? Applications, none?
Mr. Council President, just for the applications, in June, we normally have the liquor license renewals on, for, for your approval for renewal. This year, the state has launched an electronic version of the renewal process. It won't be paper anymore. Because of that and because of the late start, they're not launching it until June fourth. They've extended the deadline till mid-September, so you probably won't see those renewals until later on over the summer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, suggested by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Okay, when you come forward, please state your name, address, sign in. You'll be given five minutes.
And please speak into the mic.
Hi, Julia Peterson, twenty-five Old Sipney Road, speaking as a private citizen, not a member of any group or representing anybody but myself.
Hi, Julia Peterson, 25 Old Persipony Road, speaking as a private citizen, not a member of any group or representing anybody but myself. The first thing I want to say is that I want to invite you all, May is Historic Preservation Month. We've had a lot of talk about historic preservation. Bob and I have, for 10 years now, had an annual event where we open our house, which is a national register house. We have about 30 volunteers who come and costume themselves. We have activities for kids. If you haven't been able to attend, we welcome your attendance. It's from 1:00 to 4:30 this coming Saturday and Sunday. And we also welcome anybody's attendance. I have some flyers, I'll just hand them to Nancy when she can pass them. Okay, and the title of the event this year is "The World Comes to Persipony." I got a little tired of the Revolutionary War, so this year we're mixing it up. We're talking about immigrants to Persipony and the contributions they've made to Persipony. So we're featuring the major groups. And I think it'll be, it'll certainly be different. I hope we don't really disappoint people. Okay, and what I am here for is actually to comment on the ordinance for the purchase of Westbrook Farm. The properties that the town already owns hold a lesson for future purchases of any kind. And I think that main lesson is that it helps the public to know what the plan is. And if there isn't a plan for using something, then you need to think really carefully about whether that's what you want to buy. So you're already, the town owns and has been responsible and has done a wonderful job of superintending the buildings that you own. But you own nine at Craftsman Farms. You own the historic schoolhouse on Littleton Road. You own the Bowlsby to Gelkey House, which has had almost a million dollars of work on it. And there's still work that needs to be done. I mean, on an old house, work is never done. And it's never cheap. And also, the Smith Baldwin House, which although is a lovely, lovely property, but has, needs work. And it needs work. Almost, I mean, I wish it wasn't going to be two years before the preservation plan is done. Because every day, it's like that White Cottage. Every day that a building sits without someone paying attention to it, you lose part of it. In town, there are about 10 houses, I think, that are older than 1820. They're all owned by private owners. Most of us do our own work, because most people don't even know how to do the work on these historic buildings. And so we know the commitment of funds and love and all that stuff on these buildings. So I want to really know what the plan is for the Westbrook Park property. Why it's really important to dedicate funds to that now, given the need for park maintenance, given all those things. The other, I went back and looked at the RSE, the Reserve Open Space Initiative. And that property is maybe implied, that it may be way down on that list. But there's some other big things on that list that aren't being acted on. And the fact that the purchase basically is with Wildlife Preserves is kind of a troublesome thing, given that they're suing the town over a zoning regulation. So it's a weird little, little thing. That's kind of a curious thing. Anyhow, when you spend open space dollars, you need to be transparent, you need to be fair, and you need to be thinking about what you're doing. Because basically, that's our money. And Persipony is going to become an urban area. You know, however we cling to our backyards. In 50 years, this is going to be an urban area. And so the future citizens will thank you. When you think about the recommendations that are in that existing open space plan, there's some really good ones. And although we love our backyards, when this is an urban area, it's going to be really important that we've thought about where the open spaces are. So I urge you to think about that plan as a basis for land purchases and for targeting identified needs. Because they're all in that plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Przycki, 273 Marcela Road. I'd like to piggyback on Julie Peterson's comments on Westerbrook Farm. When I read it in the, I believe it was the Persipony Life, that one of the reasons why you were thinking about buying it was because you wanted to preserve a farm. That zoned R3. And I don't remember that ever being worked as a farm. I mean, a stuffed horse and a wagon and six chickens and one turkey right now doesn't constitute a farm. So I have to say, why are you buying it? Is it accessibility to Wildlife Preserve, who holds the mortgage on the farm? Who's going to take my money now and use it in their defense for suing us? Are there any codicils to that mortgage? Have you looked into that possibility? Since no hunting is allowed on Wildlife Preserve property and access is not allowed either, is there any codicils right now in that mortgage that would still preclude that? So then why is the sense of buying? Plus, it floods. There are other important areas in town, I think, that can be looked at and bought. I mean, when you look at the ruins at Troy, where Troy Brook is, Troy Village ruins, you tell me you're going to, you want to try and buy those, I'd laud at you. If you tell me that you wanted to fix the forge pond over on Troy Road, I would laud at you. They have historic significance, they have environmental value. Why are we going to spend $700,000 and I believe $775,000 on this piece of property? For what? What is its historic influence? And what is its environmental value? Ask yourself that before you pass this ordinance. And I don't know if I still have time, but I have a curious question. This guy talks about water, you know, for the golf course. Seems like a lot of water to me. And I got water restrictions. I've heard, and I'd like to know if it's true, are we going to sell water for Wegmans, to Wegmans? We are. That's a lot of water.
Can that answer it?
No, not...
We're not, we are.
The property is within your water area, so...
But they pay taxes to Hanover, right?
Well, that is correct, but it's not uncommon that water districts will transcend municipal boundaries.
Can you say no to them?
Well, we would get sued and we'd have another lawsuit.
Oh, there you go, you make some more money.
You know. Well, I'm happy to sue and fight for the township when it's warranted. But in this particular instance, that relationship in terms of that property that these Wegmans may go on has been in the Persipony Water District for many, many years.
What about the sewer? What about the sewer lines? Who's going to...
I don't recall whether it's in the sewer district or not. I don't think it is.
They got a plan.
But it's clearly in your water district.
Yeah. And then with mountain lakes, I hear they want to do by the back of Kinga Kings. And they need water someplace. They going to take ours?
They have a, I don't know what their deal is with, I think they have it with another town.
They went with another town.
With another town. It's amazing. And you know, I don't, golfers are golfers and golf courses, I don't know whether we should be in that business. Because when that guy's talking about his golf course, I'm thinking about my road. I mean, I got potholes, I got water main breaks that break. I can't even find the stripes on some of the roads. And I mean, you know, hello? Those are my roads that I'm walking on. I got to break my ankle and stuff like that. And it's not just the ones in Lake Persipony. Go take a ride around. They're not swept. I mean, give me a break. You know, Pride in Persipony begins with our streets.
They are being swept, Mary.
When?
It's a big town.
30 seconds.
They just, we got two sweepers, but they are being swept.
Two sweepers for how many miles of road? So maybe, you know, hello, budget more. Bye-bye.
Can I just make a comment about the golf course? The golf course is self-sustaining. In other words, Mary, just so you know, it does not come out of your money. It's self-sustaining, it brings in revenue, and then that pays for the expenses. So it's not coming from specific tax dollars.
It's a utility.
It's a utility. It pays the water bill.
Evening, Mayor, Council President, Council. Name is George St. Peters, Union President, Loco PBA 131. I'm here on behalf of the men and the women of the Police Department. Just want to start off, as you know, we have been working without a contract for nearly 18 months. While the negotiations have been difficult, based on the good relations built up over the past several years between the PBA and administration, we were able to reach a proposed settlement over two months ago. This proposed settlement includes very modest increases and several significant concessions requested by the administration. I'm here tonight to urge you to bring this longstanding matter to its conclusion. The proposed new contracts with both the PBA and Superior units were finalized over a month ago. Were available for your review. We're here tonight to express our sincere disappointment that the ratification vote on our new contract was once again pulled from the agenda. We urge you to resolve this matter tonight or at your next meeting on May 19th. Thank you.
My name is Ray Vigano, 16 Whitewood Drive. I'd like to make a couple of comments based on what I've heard from your auditor. The first thing, and also comments about water. We've heard a lot about water tonight. One thing I do urge as a resident here, knowing that we have wells and groundwater, and our town has been growing at a fairly significant rate, I hope somebody's paying attention to the future water needs and how that's going to be addressed. I haven't really heard much discussion over the years, I've been a resident over 35 years, about future ways to address the needs of water or our town. Getting back to the water issue. The auditor also mentioned reserves. And I know reserves are needed. But I hear a lot of reserves in this account, in that account, in that account. One of the accounts that I remember commenting about a few years ago is the water utility reserve. This is a money-making operation that you have. There's a surplus, a surplus regularly built up. A few years ago, there was a small rebate given to the citizens of Persipony. I think that I'm hearing again that this utility, we're either paying more for water than we should be, and you should reduce the rate, or you should give a rebate to the people who are paying the water bills. And not transferring that surplus to other accounts. The second thing I want to comment on is, I worked for almost 40 years in private industry. I had responsibility for approving expenditures. Hearing this auditor say that purchases are made and then purchase orders are generated after the fact, you all know that that's extremely improper unless it's an emergency situation. People in management have delegation of authority. Different levels can approve different amounts. I didn't hear what the auditor said. He didn't give details, how many purchase orders, what the amounts involved were. I urge you to look into this. Because this is highly improper unless it's an emergency situation. In my case, in my experience, people who did that would be either disciplined or dismissed. And I urge you to look into it. If it's a significant problem with significant amounts of money involved, you should take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I comment on that issue? When we came, which is not that long ago, obviously, Ellen and I, June and September, I also noticed that. However, before any purchases are done, it is already encumbered that the purchase order date just happens to be after the fact, which we've stopped. Okay, that is not a good practice, we agree. There have been no over expenditures and nothing blatant, but the practice is not acceptable and has been stopped. The qualified purchasing agent already is aware of the purchase. The old antiquated accounting system that we have and we're replacing, with the replacement, will resolve any of that problem. We've had a lot of issues with the old accounting system. Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, totally agree. But we do have a qualified purchasing agent who does encumber the money. The purchase order itself is not cut before, which it will be going forward. Totally agree.
Yes.
Yes, totally agree.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and the purchasing agent does do that.
And unfortunately, and again, not to give up any past administration, this has just been historically on for years, years, 20 years, many, many years. So as soon as we saw it, we, long before the auditor, you know, said that this was unacceptable. And then the fact that we went from the, as you say, the antiquated system that we have, we're going with the Edmund system, it's almost ready to kick it.
Yeah, we're beginning that whole process. I mean, it's a process. And we're also teaching, we have to teach the entire township about the proper channels and how to do it a little bit differently. It's a teaching experience. But however, I just want you to know that no expenditures are done without prior knowledge. It's just that we want it before and we want it with approvals in advance from not only the qualified purchasing agent, but from the CFO and the mid-business administration.
He's saying it's a purchase, yes. Yes.
And there is.
Yes, and I'm, when Anne signs it, she's saying, yeah, the money's available. Well, when I'm signing, I'm saying this is a legitimate thing.
30 seconds, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we took up his time.
I'm sorry, I took up your time.
We were just answering his question, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Anne and Ellen, I just want to follow up on a concern that I have. Is it public record already, the audit report for 2014?
Not until you approve it.
Okay, once we approve it, can we get a copy?
It will be up on the website immediately.
So people can see it?
It'll be right on the website immediately.
It'll be on the website as well.
Absolutely.
We get a hard copy in the library, as we used to do in the past?
Sure.
Great, that'd be good.
Absolutely.
Richard Rosenthal, 3 Cambridge Road, Morris Plains. I don't have any complaints tonight, and I hope I'm not out of order. When I first came to Persipony, the first thing I did was come up Route 46. And all I saw was strip malls. Cross over Bever Road, you see a building that's covered with signs. Nothing that says I want to live in Persipony. Craftsman Farms is located in Morris Plains. Deep Esquall, one of the top salons in Vogue, says Morris Plains. Brooklyn School listed at one time, one of the top schools in the United States, listed in Morris Plains. When a vote was taken a number of years ago for the people who lived in my area in Powder Mill, where do you want to live, in Persipony or Morris Plains? Overwhelmingly, it went with Morris Plains. Which leads to the next idea what I have here. Mr. Inglesino, you discussed COLA. You know what's going to happen. We are going to be on the short end of the stick, we know that. We are going to have a lot more properties being developed. And what is going to happen now is the builders are going to tell us how we are going to run our town. They are going to start locating pieces of property all through Persipony that will be developed. You stated at that time that we need a planning, a new plan for Persipony, and it's going to cost a lot of money. I believe you're absolutely right. I think you're the expert who knows where this town has to go. I've been through Wood, coincidentally, I was through Woodbridge the past week. What is that, the, not condominium, whatever they are. Apartments in New Jersey, strip after strip, wains, strip after strip, totally nondescript buildings. I live across right below the Mountain Club. They put up a housing development, my God, I don't think they were allowed to have any grass in there. Then one, they built, they're building right next to the gas station on Route 10. Is there any grass in there, or maybe they have a five-foot strip? This is what's going to happen in Persipony. I think you have to take an active part, start developing or start looking for these pieces of property that are going to be developed. Now, I know somebody had said, well, maybe if we zone everything for water, that'll stop the problem. No, it's not. Builders are going to start looking at pieces of property in a... Builders are going to start looking at pieces of property, inexpensive pieces of property, assemble them, and build what they want. I also mentioned something to the effect that let's start raising the height of our buildings, and it has nothing to do with the fire department. Look what Longbridge Branch did a number of years ago. Longbridge was a totally nothing town down the shore. Look what they have done with their beautiful buildings. You mentioned something about 1515 that's going to be developed, and rightfully so. But I think what ought to be proposed to 1515 is at least go as the height that goes next door of the Marriott Hotel, at least raise it there. You don't want to go to the high-rise that I said, but I see happening, going to be high-rise. At least if you allow them to raise it, at least you could start chipping away at the number of low-income housing that's going to happen. Otherwise, we are going to find mushroom after mushroom of developments all through the town, not the way we want it to happen. My first, and I'm willing to bet, the first piece of property that I'm going to see developed will be Tabor Lake. An offer's going to be made, because one person owns pretty much a majority, or a very high percentage of it. So you're going to see, either you're going to have strip homes along the lake, but this is going to happen. And that's why I say to you, you have to be proactive, you have to start with the plan now, you have to start working on it now. And once you say what's going to happen in your town, you will be the ones who will control the destiny of this town. And I really want, and this is my running joke here, when I always say I'm Morris Plains, I want my address to be Precipiny. I want people to be proud of Precipiny. And I think if you allow these homes to develop with this plan that you suggested all along, and keep it up for this, people will be able to say, yes, I want to live in Precipiny.
Mr. Council President, if I may, just a quick, a quick story about post office addresses for the moment. Back in 1993, when I was running for Town Council in Rockaway Township at the Second Ward, I was walking over in the area by the Rockaway Town Square Mall, and people had a Dover mailing address. And the one comment I got was, you know, we don't want a Dover mailing address, we want to be Rockaway Township. So I thought, wow, I've come across a great issue. So I made an appointment to go down to see Congressman Dean Gallo, Precipiny's favorite son, who had his congressional office at the old post office in Maristown. And I walked in there with a councilman from Rockaway Township, and I felt I had a very strong issue, I was very determined as a congressman. My people over here, they want a Rockaway Township post office address, and I really think that you should do that for them. And he said, he said, young man, he said, I've been a congressman now for about ten years, I live in Precipiny, it's my hometown, we got eight different post office addresses in Precipiny, so if I can't get it done in Precipiny, I don't know that I can get it done in Rockaway Township. So just because people have a Morris Plains mailing address doesn't mean they're not proud to be in Precipiny. And with regard to the, you know, the housing, we are working in concert with Ed Snikus, the planner. Obviously, there is a policy decision that will have to be made by the governing body with respect to the height of buildings. I will tell you this, though, in New Jersey, if you notice, you find it's very uncommon to find residential structures higher than four stories. And the reason for that is, is that the construction code only permits wood or stick construction up to four stories. After that, you have to go to a concrete or Hambro type of system, which adds exponentially to the cost. And particularly, that is so in suburban New Jersey. So even if the council wanted to entertain increased heights, I would suggest that there would be some reach out to the development community to see whether or not there would be, you know, an investment market for a higher type of product, given the high cost of construction for anything over four stories.
Mr. Rosenthal, usually I agree with you, but in this case about taller buildings, I have to disagree with you.
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
I have to disagree with you. I don't want taller buildings. We are a suburban town, I want to keep us a suburban town, and I will fight height as long as I can.
I've got to tell you, I'm not too thrilled with it either, but when I see an isolated piece of property next to the Marriott, it's no problem. When I see that you allowed, right next to a gas station, and these people look out their back window, and there is a wall forty feet high, it looks like a prison back there, I mean, that is not a pride of Precipiny. And what you allowed, what was allowed in front of the Mountain Club, no grass, no nothing, that's what you're developing in Precipiny. I don't, I'm not thrilled with height, neither, I never was. Three years ago, I wouldn't have been here. But what's going to happen, you're going to have the mushroom developments all through the town. And to me, that's ugly, and it just, they look miserable. And it's nothing to say proud of when you turn into Powdermill, and I look at the development across the road, I think it's a disgrace. And whoever was the architect for it, you ought to be ashamed of himself.
Roy Masmer, 10 Drummond Drive. I'll sign in, Paul, it's a good time. Regarding, before I get going, because obviously, the whole thing tonight has changed, because I didn't know what was going on tonight. I say this every year, Julie Peterson, Bob Peterson, put on a great open house, the volunteers that they have and everything else, I'm looking forward to it, it's an excellent time, bring your children, bring your family down. Regarding the golf course presentation tonight, I can't talk about the irrigation, that would be up to the golf superintendent, but I will tell you this, though. Over the last couple of months, I spoke to about forty-six regular players, both at the upper knoll and the lower knoll. They have never seen the course in this good a shape. And these forty-six players have been players for a number of years, and they just haven't played there the last couple of years. So the golf superintendent's been doing a super job there. Thursday night, I'll speak more about my observations up there, because I was up there twice in the last couple of months. Regarding the audit questions tonight, so in the past, when S.K. and Co. was here, Joe Falcone and one of his other partners would sit up there, and the public would be able to ask questions. So that's not going to happen this year? Okay, my time's going to run out. That's the way it's been done in the past, because I have a few questions for them, which I'm going to put memo form to all of you, and hopefully, I'll get some answers. Regarding what I really wanted to come here tonight to talk about was my housekeeping. The memos that I've been writing lately, and I'm not getting any answers on anything. And I want to share a couple with the public here tonight before my time runs out. The Bob Campbell memo, I'm probably going to run out of time, but I'm going to read this one, because this bothers me big time. Bob Campbell has a big following in this town, let me tell you. And I consider him a very good person. The time he volunteers in this town, look at the Precipiny life last week, his beekeeping. Reference, Robert, I dated this, this was done on April 2nd. Robert Campbell, reference, Robert Campbell, the witch hunt. I'm requesting the following expenses associated with the aforementioned investigation inclusive of, but not limited to, one, Aurora Services, two, police regular and overtime, legal, et cetera. Who authorized this matter? I pretty much know what was going on down there. I think it's horrible what this administration did. And following up with something else, and I'm not going to get to my other housekeeping stuff, I'll have to do it next Tuesday, because time's going to run out. This really bothers me, I want the public here tonight, and the people that watch the video, and there are a lot of people that watch it, the sales tax situation with Aurora billing. I'm the one that picked this up. I don't Oprah stuff when I don't need to. I just come into Yancey's office just to tell you, I don't want the expense, I don't want trees cut down for copies. But I went into the office on January 14th, 2015, and I did get these bills out. There were two or three invoices on here, a total amount of $3,067. I've been told by several people that there were additional bills with sales tax on it. Mr. Mayor, you should be ashamed of yourself, and I want an explanation tonight how that happened. I'm done. Let's see if I get an answer, though, Council President.
Yeah, I'll lay back, exactly.
My time's not up, then. Don't sit here and tell me that you got the money back, because if I didn't pick it up, we wouldn't have got the money back. Now, Ellen, that's right.
That's correct.
Yeah, I know that, but that's not my question. If I didn't look at it, it would have been picked up. How did it get by? Not you, Ellen, you weren't here, and not you, Ann, how did it happen? Did you review these bills, Mr. Barbaria, from Aurora? It came out to six hundred?
I didn't have the bills at that time.
And how did I get them?
Well, you got them at that time, but I didn't have them when they were first initiated.
Oh, yeah. Is my time, how much time do I have left?
That's fifty seconds.
Oh, do I have that much time?
Yeah, exactly.
This gets even better now. Aurora started sometime in February 2013, but the bills were not submitted to the township through Inglesino's office until June 7th, 2013. Isn't that funny? It's five, about five days after that primary. They were due on July 7th. There's several pages here, the public can look at it, total sales tax on these invoices, like I said, comes to $3,067. Twenty seconds. Because I'm not going to get any answers, anyway.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. I have some information I want to pass out about water, the difference between NJDEP and the Highlands. It's all the difference in the world. Yeah, Precipiny made a big mistake by dropping out of the Highlands Conformant, it's a big mistake. But this pessimistic and defeatism about COA is not necessarily so. So Precipiny shouldn't be fed to the lines, because it doesn't, doesn't have to be. Now, the planning board, they opt out of the Highlands Master Plan, but they claim they will continue to evaluate the benefits of Conformant and move forward with efforts to align local regulations with goals and policies of the Highlands Master Plan as they related to economic development and redevelopment. But when I asked Mr. Snikus, you were there, he said, even though Precipiny was in the beginning of Conformant status, no revisions of any sort took place because they weren't involved long enough. So if, this statement here is apparently false, because we're not doing anything to defend ourselves, or to make the town better, to use science, or what we do have, our natural resources in defense of ourselves. This is from Mr. Elliot Ruga. You know Mr. Elliot Ruga?
I do not.
You do not? Well, he's the opposite side of the coin from you, Mr. Inglesino. He's a member of the Highlands. If Precipiny resolved to defend itself from a builder's remedy lawsuit, with its density, they would be in good shape. If not through rehab, conversions, et cetera, they would meet it without having to build another 1,500 market rate to get the builder to include ninety affordable units, whatever the number is. Precipiny is just too dense, and any more density, no one is going to want to live here. I don't know how to do it, but you need to call them on using the affordable housing obligation to achieve their special interest, instead of the interest of the proactivity addressing the issue, which is the best interest of the citizens of Precipiny. In other words, we should be in good shape. We shouldn't have anything to fear from this. And I have to say it again and again, I have to beat the drum, if we were in Conformant, we'd have legal protection. Yes, it's a fact, it's a fact. And it's just, it's just, I don't understand why Precipiny has to stay with home rule when we could latch on to a regional master plan. Now, I'm not going to, I'm going to give these papers here, I have one particular from Mr. Paluso, because he's on the environmental. This is about water. And we do have water problems, there is a water deficit.
Can you make a copy for everybody on that?
I have, I have some papers here, but apparently, I missed one paper here, but to get the idea here, it shows you the difference between NJDEP and the Highland Standard. NJDEP is, it's like made for developers, but it's not made for sustainability. And I don't, I don't think anybody really even realizes this. When you get, you know, DEP, it's a lower standard. I would think by now, we've been around on the earth long enough to have something higher for ourselves. If we compromise, it should be a compromise to bring all of us to a higher level, not to a lower level. And that's what home rule is. And Precipiny made a mistake by opting out of regional Conformant. Or Mr. Inglesino's going to make a lot of money defending his town to make sure that
Thirty seconds.
builder's remedy doesn't affect his town unduly.
Mr. Homiak, may I respond?
Are you done talking? You still have?
You have fifteen seconds. Fifteen seconds.
We don't want John going on a tirade yet, you got somewhere to hunt with here. All right, John.
Mr. Homiak, as you've been coming up here now over the years, and we've gotten to know each other, and you gave me a book, which I'm very grateful, I'm going to read it, I have a respect for you, and I like you very much, and you're obviously very passionate about your cause, but you couldn't be more wrong as it relates to some of the things that you say. Number one, whether or not Precipiny opts into the Highlands or not, has absolutely zero impact on Precipiny's affordable housing obligation under the Supreme Court decision that came out on March 10th. You may not like that fact, but it is a fact. Fact two, the reason Precipiny and many other municipalities years ago opted into the Highlands was to avail themselves under a reduced affordable housing obligation under the failed Corzine COA Round Three regulations. The reason, the fact, the reason why Precipiny opted out of the Highlands was so that it could expedite a amendment to the wastewater management plan to accommodate sewer service. So these are just some of the things that I think, you know, respectfully, I have to continue to bring to the, to the public's attention. Precipiny has, under the decision that came out March 10th, the Builders Association and the Fair Share Housing Council has promulgated numbers, affordable housing numbers for every municipality in the state of New Jersey. Precipiny's number, under both organizations' calculation, exceeds a thousand units. There is, by the way, we checked the statute, a thousand-unit mercy rule cap of affordable housing units, which again, means a lot more market rate units. The League of Municipalities does not have an expert, and has not provided numbers for each of the towns. And so your planner, Ed Snikus, is working to figure out, A, what he believes the number should be, and B, working on a plan to figure out where to put the affordable housing. We can't just make up numbers. The court was very, very specific in its decision in saying that you must, must use Round Two methodology. Must use Round Two methodology. And that methodology results in an absurd amount of affordable housing in suburban municipalities in the state of New Jersey. If you look at the numbers, that's the way it is. The factors that count against municipalities, one, vacant land. So if you have vacant land that is developable, forget how it's zoned, it doesn't matter, it's developable, that's going to increase your affordable housing obligation. Number two, your wealth factor. If you're a wealthy town, that's going to increase your affordable housing obligation. Precipiny is a wealthy town. Three is going to be jobs. If you have a lot of office space, if you have a lot of retail, if you have a lot of opportunity for jobs, you're going to have a high affordable housing obligation. You can see now why Precipiny, Precipiny, Randolph, Rockaway Township, all at a thousand units capped, Hanover, East Hanover, Denville, all very high numbers under the fair share calculation and under the Builders Association calculation. I'm not saying those are definitively the numbers, because the planners in those towns are going to have something to say about that, ours included. But the picture that is being painted, as presented by Mr. Snikus, is that there's going to be a significant increase in Precipiny's affordable housing obligation as a result of this case. It's not a question of, we just can't pretend that that isn't so. You know, that's a fact. The low end, by Mr. Purcell, who I guess is conflicted out, because he worked for COA from representing the league, on the low end, had a number of, I think it was 368 units that Mr. Snikus shared. That's just of affordable housing units. Again, that translates into a lot more market rate units. So there is going to be an impact, there is going to be more development. The question is, how much more, and where is it going to go, and how do we manage that process? I can tell you that when you have vacant land out there that's unspoken for, that not only does it increase your obligation, but that vacant vacant land also becomes vulnerable to unwanted multifamily housing, affordable housing projects, whether the town wants it or not. And, and so trying to manage that in a responsible way to help achieve the policy objective, objectives of the governing body is something that, you know, myself, the planner, the administration, and the council are going to be spending a lot of time doing over the next, over the foreseeable future. And, you know, the key is environmentally sensitive lands, recognizing your natural resources, defending those resources. The regional management plan has all of that, even if you don't conform to it. Mr. Homiak, your time's up.
Revise your, revise your plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Papatacha, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Okay, John, what do you got for me? He had the thing on the handbook.
Well, wait, are you going to finish your, do you have any other questions, or?
Yeah, but he was so excited before, I figured he might want to jump out of his seat there, so I'll ask. Okay. Um, the Gulf and Sewer Investigations, what's happening with them? Um, boop, boop. Uh, vacant land, it really worries me. Can't be a little dollhouses and start placing them. You know, just place them anyway, so these developers can come in. Um, where we get where a wealthy town? I have no clue. It's saying last week, 125,000 is the median income in this town. Yeah. What world do they live in? You know, where are they? Just go talk to all D, D, T, W workers, you know? Nobody's, come on. I can't even talk. Okay, now, seriously, you're not going to like this one, John. I questioned you last time I was here, and I really want an answer. We had a budget of $420,000 for our attorney, and last year, we exceeded that budget by close to another $400,000. Where did we get the money to pay that? Where did it come from? Because we had, as the auditor said, such a tight budget. I don't understand. We have to be transparent. You have to let us know where this money is coming from. It's our money. We are getting upset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, John.
Thank you.
I will, if it's okay with you, Ms. Patatia, I would like to meet with you after the meeting, and I will provide you with the information that you've requested. I prefer not to do that in a public setting.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, see no one else come forward to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Mr. DePiro.
Okay, resolution, 2015-091. Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills amending the 2015 temporary budget to, motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Do we need to close?
Okay, closed session. Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege in the following litigation matter, Shawn Hopkins versus Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Wildlife Preserve, Pipeline Ordinance, and Mossberg Sewer Connection. And whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the Township Council, the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
We're on.
You good?
Yep, we're on.
Make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. DePiro. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes, good night, all.
All right, guys.